All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order for January 10th. This is the Committee of the Whole. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:30 PM. Very quickly before we begin, I want to go ahead and make note of the fact that based on our recommendation from the CDC, we still are asking everyone that takes part in tonight's proceedings to wear masks. We certainly appreciate everybody doing that to ensure the safety of all. That being said, Clerk Bullock, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatterfor. You do have a quorum. I did see Councilmember Spatter step away.
All right, thank you so much. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, Meeting Minutes for January 3rd, 2022. I'm going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes of January 3rd as written.
Thank you so much. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Four. This is Public Comment on Agenda Items. Unlike City Council meetings, we do not have a sign up. We do take public comment on a first come, first served basis. We simply ask that you come down to the podium. You have up to three minutes to speak on any of the agenda items before the Committee of the Whole today. And we ask that you speak clearly into the record your name for our recording secretary. So come on down if you have public comment.
Good evening, Loretta Stanaway. And I am here tonight to talk about the resignation at last of Brandon Betts and the option you have for filling the vacant seat that he leaves behind. I would point out that the council at this point is of a constitution that is such that it gives the committee a good chance of moving forward and not being bogged down in petty political, personal battles. So I would encourage you to look at the options for going forward positively, progressively, and not necessarily focusing on any particular group such as progressives or social democrats or any other quote labeled groups, but focus on finding a person who can represent the voice of the majority, not the most vocal minority, and someone who will represent the will of the ward and not get bogged down in political or personal agendas. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to provide public comment tonight? Seeing none, that takes us to Agenda Item Number Five. We have one presentation tonight. This is a presentation from the Capital Area Transportation Authority. I do see CEO Bradley Funkhauser, and I believe, it's a little difficult with the mask, but that might be Nathan Triplet? Maybe not? Is it? Fantastic. If you guys want to come on down to the well. Yep, you can take a seat right here. Go ahead and make sure that that mic is working for us. We certainly appreciate you guys being on hand. Yep. Speak, speak, speak into it just a little. Yep, we can hear you. Fantastic. All right, so just to preface the presentation, first of all, thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. I think any year, it's important obviously to have a presentation from the Capital Area Transportation Authority. Public transportation is just so incredibly important to any urban area if it's truly going to thrive. I think obviously with the realities that we're facing with the pandemic, it makes a presentation and discussion all the more important. We know that there have been changes in terms of ridership, in terms of services provided. As a matter of fact, I think I just saw something about the weekday express and some changes that are being made. So Councilwoman Wood and myself, along with our office manager, met pretty early in the year to discuss presentations that we'd like to have before this body. CADA rose really to the top of the heap. We reached out and you guys were fantastic in making sure that you could make that happen in short order. So we appreciate your being here. Our understanding is that you're going to kind of generally speak to the operations of CADA right now. Obviously, some implications with regard to COVID. And then what I'd like to do is, at the end of the presentation, open it up for councilmember questions and comments. Okay? All right, take it away. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President and Vice President, members of the council. My name is Bradley Funkhauser. I'm the CEO of CADA. I've served in this role for four full years now. I started in January of 18. At that time, working with the Board of Directors, we quickly put together a strategic plan that really looked at five items. You can find these on our website. Regional mobility, customer experience excellence, organizational strength, community partnerships, and a dynamic workplace. And we took off out of the gate and have been moving very quickly since. And of course, boom, pandemic. And I will lead off by giving you an idea of how we reacted to this pandemic. I will tell you first and foremost, and I apologize enough to adjust my mask a little bit here as I go, who is prepared for this? This is, kidding aside, this is my first pandemic. I worked for three transit authorities on the West Coast and Ohio and New York and have never experienced anything like this. Like many transit providers, CADA has experienced unprecedented challenges during this pandemic. But we've risen to meet those challenges head on with a great workforce. Not surprisingly, we've seen major changes in our ridership and experienced significant driver shortages among other challenges. Ridership right now, since 19, is about half. And that's a, that's a marker that we've seen within our ranks, whether it's Spartan service, that we have this service going on, or non-Spartan service. This is consistent with what other transit authorities have seen across the United States. You know, a recent scan of national headlines, and you can see it went out alone. In fact, just today, I had someone send me the suburban metropolitan transit authority outside of Detroit, known as SMART, has just announced that they are going to be cutting their mainline service by 20% to 25%. That's devastating service cuts. I'm proud to tell you that CADA has not only not cut service, but we have maintained a level of service and increased it since 19. And I'll get into the new Route 18 that was partnered with Lansing's staff in the mayor's office to make that possibility. So you actually have more service on the street than you ever have. I think one of our saving graces, and some of it was luck and some of it was good advice, is getting smart people around here to listen, is that we did not lay off staff. In fact, even as this approached, we sat down with our union and worked diligently with memorandums of understanding, and we sent our workforce home with their bidet for eight to nine weeks. And we got a volunteer group that we paid time to have them come in. We were the first transit authority in the state of Michigan to shut down mainline service. And I, quite frankly, members of the council was terrified. I was talking to Nathan several times, wondering if this was going to work. And I said, well, we've got to do it. We can take care of the most vulnerable in this community by doing a call-in service. We had hired a number of temps and bought them lunch and kept them safe. And we knew who the most vulnerable were because we deal with them on a regular basis with our Spectran, dialysis, chemotherapy. So we called them at a time to make sure that they got their rides and then we dealt with those that needed to get to work, grocery trips. And beholden behold, we were able to do that. I'm very proud of staff and partners for doing that service. So what about service? We talked about service cuts. You've seen some, maybe some confusing headlines about downsizing on one of the news outlets. We're not cutting service. In fact, what we're doing is changing equipment. So we went from large buses, 40-foot buses that only have a couple people on the express buses. It's the same service, we're just using smaller equipment. Spartan service, of course, New Year's Eve, we got the announcement, as you did, that because of the increase in number of cases, that MSU was going to go online all the way. Lansing School District, who we've been helping out this fall, because of driver shortages across the entire region and the state, we've had to become flexible and it's almost like a cruise ship. Transit service, when you schedule it over a period of weeks and months, is not a very flexible thing. So it has forced us to become flexible. How do you do this? It's hard to do. But we were able to extend our holiday, we call it our backcourt, our holiday service, you don't need as much service. We extended that to the 23rd of January. And we've even been in conversations with MSU today about expectations, and they have more students on campus, and do they need morning service because it's so cold out? And so we're going to react to that and be able to put more service out there. And this is on a daily basis now. We will continue to communicate any further updates that impact riders via media releases, radio TV, web updates, diagrams at bus stops, rider clerk subscriptions, social media, and email to nonprofit and service agencies. Workforce, just like everyone else, especially in the driver ranks, we need more drivers. Our new system of scheduling, we're doing well, but we need more drivers. We've been able to hire in classes, smaller classes and larger classes. We have a new class that's coming up in a month of about 15, and we will continue to hire part-time drivers, and then they get to move up into full-time ranks. We will continue to do this in foreseeable future. But you know, as I always say to university officials, you know, right now the workforce is, we're, everybody's hiring from everybody else. And until this settles down, it's going to be very difficult. And we'll do the best we can. I do see in the future, in the near future, that we will be challenged with service levels, but it will be frequencies. Think of, think of going to the grocery store and you have the hours of service that are still open, but the number of checkout lines is going to be reduced because of the workforce. And we're going to be faced with the same thing. So we may, on a very temporary basis, look at service reductions on frequencies, but not geographic areas or routes or anything like that. And the seniors and disabled are the most vulnerable in our community. And we've set this in motion where if people need rides or help, we've had people call in and say, how do I get a ride? And we may not provide that in the geographic area. We will help people get the rides if they need. That's part of who we are now. To give you a scale of what we're talking about, we have about 235 drivers right now. We probably need about another 30, 35, maybe as many as 40 more drivers. As I said, ridership has cut in half. Ironically, we saw the Spectran drop to about, drop by more than 45%. But in recent weeks and recent months, it's been an uptick. In fact, we're almost back to pre-COVID levels in Spectran. So we continue to find ways to make that more efficient and leave it. Obviously, with COVID, the equipment that we operate vans, small lessons, we're challenged with the number of people we can carry. And that's been one of the frustrations that we had, not pointed at anybody. It's just the reality of COVID that we cannot have as many people that have banned at a time. So we've got to send out two trips. The new Route 18 is a proud launch that we had with the city of Lansing on Jolly. And this was designed with three buses during the day to operate high frequency and allow for on-street transfers across some of those main routes. And I'm very proud that we've got as many as 60 to 70 people a day. That has obviously started to tail off because people aren't running the bus when things close up and schools are closed. And so we hope to have those levels, but we're very proud of that service as we've moved on. Public feedback. You know, on a monthly basis, we have public comments scheduled at our board meetings, but we've also had listening sessions. Well, how good are listening sessions if people aren't able to come out and have those discussions? So recently, in fact, the beginning of this month, we will have public feedback regarding service and service updates through Zoom meetings. And you'll see those being scheduled shortly so that we can be a veteran when people aren't relying on either coming to the board meeting or going to a public meeting that they feel safe on. Some of the best comments that we get come directly from riders. In fact, two years ago, I was kind of the CDC and a rider who rides the Route 7, and I won't tell you who she is, but she's, she would always come up to me and tell me how her service is. And I'm like, hey, did we nail it today? She said, you need Saturday service on the Route 7. And so that interaction expanded to conversations with other people on Route 7. We ultimately expanded it to Saturday service. And I said, hey, how'd we do it? And she said, hey, now expand it to Sunday. So those individual comments make a difference, and we're very proud of that. Quickly, partnerships with the EOC here in Lansing. I can't say enough about that partnership. We were able to respond with complimentary trips through COVID. We offer free vaccine rides. We've done almost 2,100 free trips. And I cannot emphasize that enough. If someone needs a ride for testing or the vaccine, we will make sure that that is taken care of. We have gone into a twice-a-month meeting with our counterparts in Eaton County and Quitna. We wanted to speak a little bit about regionalism. While we are very separated from a taxing situation, services situation, people don't really care what county you're in and where the road is and how we get from here to there. And real regionalism on a transportation basis needs to be seen. And so we partnered, our first task with the other two counties was on this issue, was it doesn't matter who's taking who, where, make sure that people get access to that vaccine quick. And so that led to a capital project where we joined other regional agencies and going out to the state radio system. That was approved by our board three months ago. And so shortly, we will be on the state system. I'm very excited about that because that's really the foundation for regional communication and dispatch in the future. We have been at the negotiating table with our union since the fall of 19. I will tell you, we are eager to have this contract resolved. The highlight that I will give all of you is that President I sat down about a month ago and laid out some ideas. You take care of this, I'll take care of this. We have met since then, and we are scheduled to meet again this week. We have a small group, and I anticipate progress shortly on that. Looking forward, the first thing I will tell you is, I'm not sure what's going to happen. I don't think any of us. We have to maintain flexibility. We have to maintain an open mind on how we do this. On the capital side and customer service side, things are going to really start ramping up.
My mic no good? Okay. All righty, so I'm going to start over again. While COVID is wreaking havoc, we are going to concentrate on the customer service side of things. We are looking at this summer, putting cameras on all of our buses. We are looking at contactless fare payment after upgrading all of our fare boxes over the last year or so. We are exploring opportunities to streamline and improve out-county services and cross-boundary services. We're going to continue to look at runs to improve efficiencies, reduce costs, but not take away what people perceive as reducing service. We are getting a new internal auditing system. And quite frankly, I think some of you may recall, three or four years ago, the financial situation CADA was in. I can tell you that we are in very good shape. We are anticipating a clean audit for the first time in years. Very excited about this. We are exploring electric buses. We are exploring what it would take to convert our fleet. It's still in the, in the exploration stages. But an electrification plan is being presented to our board at their workshop this month to, to have the conversation. We did work with the Board of Water and Light and have contracted with them over a year ago to do the, the green renewable plant. So all of our energy on our three facilities comes from that. We have our 50-year celebration, believe it or not. CADA will turn 50 this year during the pandemic. Yay. CADA will implement an anti-human trafficking and awareness program partnered with Lansing Police Department. We are piloting not only electric vehicles, but working with MSU on autonomous vehicles. And I know you say, well, you're a union shop. There are levels of autonomous vehicle. We will not go above level three. So there will always need to be a driver in that vehicle. And finally, I want to tell you that, and I'm not ending with this by any means as the last point. I wanted to end with it because it's, it's very important in, in our evolution as CADA, is that in the staff that we've hired, we've, we've got a real passion now for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we have a monthly meeting where they have projects and expectations. And the challenge that has been given to me is to share the decision-making with this group. And it's really taken off. I'm excited about it. And I see that we've got big things coming in, in 2022 about that. So a little scattered, but I wanted to hit a lot of things. And I'm sure you're going to have questions, but wanted to wrap it up there, if that's okay.
Well, we certainly appreciate it. Commissioner Triplet, do you have anything to add before we turn it over for council comments and questions?
Just very quickly, because I think the questions are going to be probably the most valuable part of this dialogue. I did want to thank you for the opportunity to represent the city on the board, acknowledge that Lansing is also very ably represented by three additional members, one of whom is with us in the audience this evening, Jenny Geese, and then Dusty Fancher and Derek Milo send their thanks and their regrets for not being able to be here this evening. The only comment that I wanted to make, President Hussein and council members, is I think a lot about March of 2020, when the phrase "essential workers" or "essential services" first really entered the common parlance in our state, in our, in our region. And it should have been clear to all of us before that time that transit was an essential service. But if it wasn't, it definitely became clear during the course of the pandemic. And Brad has mentioned some of the things that we did as an authority to make sure that that essential service continued to operate, to move people across this region, to buy groceries, to go to medical appointments and see their families, and the like. But the thought I want to leave all of you with, and as we get into the questions, is I think you can also see that kind of adaptability that CADA demonstrated as an example of how our authority needs to confront any number of challenges that face us. We talked about regional mobility. And for a long time, I think our region has looked at transit and mobility as, well, here's the menu of things we offer. And even if you don't want what's on the menu, it's what we offer. And I think credit to Brad and to our board and to the amazing employees at CADA. That culture shift has really happened to the point now where the question is, what service does this region need? Do our employers need? Do our communities need? Do our neighborhoods need? And how can we best accommodate that, whether it's within our service area, whether it's connecting our service area to others and whatnot? And I think that we've learned a lot from the pandemic about the importance of adaptability. And now we're trying to do both of those things in parallel track. Keep this service running at the level the community expects and deserves during the pandemic, despite all the challenges of operating a transit system in a global pandemic, while at the same time also looking towards the future and these bigger questions about regional mobility, electrification, and modernizing the service, and trying to bring that same mindset to making sure that the community is getting what they need from CADA here in the city of Lansing and in the broader region as well. And of course, we can't do that without feedback from the elected officials who represent those regions, who can help us figure out what is it that the region needs. And so in that spirit, we would love to take your questions.
I certainly appreciate that. Do we have any councilmember questions or comments? First, we'll go to Councilman Garza, Councilwoman Wood, and then Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, you guys. Mr. Triplet, Mr. Funkhauser, thanks for being here this evening. Sounds like you guys put this presentation together pretty fast. Thank you. And Happy New Year. Just two questions. You know, I'm glad to see the bargaining's moving forward. That was going to be a question of mine. But when we talk about being in a global pandemic, you know, and you have, you say, 240-some-odd drivers, what are you doing as far as PPE? What kind of protections are you providing your drivers and as well as the passengers on CADA?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Garza. And I have that, PR staff had that written in here, and I was jumping around and went right over it. So early on, having not had a playbook on this, we're looking to each other in the transit industry, also to the city, and how do you keep people safe? What we landed on was a fairly rigid sanitation, sanitizing program. In fact, all of the buses are sanitized every night, in addition to them being cleaned. They are also sanitized on the street. We have people who are contracted with, with the appropriate antimicrobial, hospital-grade wash, and they go through the buses at frequent times at two of the transit centers. But as far as the employees, we worked early on with our members. And minds changed. At first, we didn't want to have the, the drivers blocked from the communication with the riders. Ultimately, we found that that was the best protection. So we put in barriers in all of our buses. And so PPE, we've made not only masks available, but there have been some standards about what kind of mask to wear and how to clean. And we've continued to invest in those. So hand sanitizer and masks and all the things that, that, you know, got cleared from the shelves early on are made available. And we've, like everybody else, now stockpiled those.
Great. Okay, thank you. And last question, you know, I am the board representative that CADA sits in on Tranter Street. And I know I spoke with you about this previously. But you know, the people that live on Devonshire, you know, I get complaints regularly, you know, not so much right now, but I did through this last summer, of the CADA employees parking on Tranter Street. And you know, obviously, they're takeoff for their shift for eight hours, however many hours it may be. And if like a utility company comes in there or someone wants to access the backyard, they can't because the vehicles are parked there. Is there anything that can be done other than going through public services and maybe putting a two-hour parking sign on the street to help mitigate that?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. This is, this has been a question for, for a couple of years now. And, and first and foremost, we want to be a good neighbor. We're in a residential area. And so what we have offered, because there is actually very limited, if any, access from those homes out onto the street when you look at the, the map. So that's, that's free and fair parking, if you will. And so what we have done is, we have let everyone know that if, if they want access to that or if a utility needs that, we just need notice and we'll cone it off. We'll have our facilities people come out and cone it off. And there isn't been an issue in, in, at least since the last time you and I spoke about it.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Brad, I've got a series of questions for you. First of all, since we were talking about the workforce, the part-time drivers that you have before they become full-time, are they part of the union?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. Second, when you talked about your listening sessions, you talked about Zoom meetings. And most of my comments are going to relate to the senior population that I work with. And I'm going to tell you right now, the majority of seniors do not access Zoom. I would encourage you, because many of the senior facilities do have community rooms and are, and they are using those community rooms now, that you look at having listening sessions at those. You know, you've got Capitol Commons, Friendship Manor, Riverfront, Edgewood, there, you know, there's a whole group of them to get some real feedback, especially dealing with Spectran, which many of them use. So that would be one of the encouragements that, that I'd have for you. Nighttime meetings, seniors are not going to come out to nighttime meetings, even if they can, you know, they've got some type of access to get there, simply because they're afraid to be out at, at night. So that's why I think you need to go where they are. I think that's extremely important. I know that you've come and addressed things at RSVP and talked to the seniors there previously, but this would touch on a larger population. Lansing has been designated as a great place for seniors to live based on AARP, and Mark And Mark Lawrence and I, as well as others, and in fact, we have a representative from CADA that is working on the lifetime living, um, plan, um, that, that's part of, um, AARP. And, um, Spectran, you know, is extremely important to seniors. And part of the issue is because it gives them some independence, they become, they will talk to one another, they will talk to family and friends or to people that they trust about their concerns, but then they become afraid to talk to those in charge because they're afraid they're going to lose Spectran. And without it, they have no accessibility whatsoever. Um, so that, I, you know, I think that's extremely important. We, we continue to still have, we, we have good, reliable drivers. And then we have ones where, um, they, um, we have a senior to be picked up and we've watched for, uh, Spectran for them and they didn't come. And when they call Spectran, the answer that they get, well, the driver was there, well, we had volunteers standing right out there waiting for Spectran and they weren't there. So, you know, I think the reliability of that is extremely important. Can you address some of the control mechanisms and the things that you work with to, to try to look at those issues?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for those initial comments because I, I concur completely with them. Uh, it reminds me of when I worked for MDOT and we were doing the 496 reconstruction and needed to talk to the neighborhoods and, and we, we asked the pastors council and we said, how do we, how do we reach the people instead of setting up public meetings at a particular time and saying, well, we, 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 we set up meetings and no one came? So I appreciate those comments because the, the best way to get, uh, someone's input is, is to ask them how to do it. So thank you for that. Uh, the controls on Spectran are, are varied and, um, in fact, if we run into a particular issue with, um, a perceived no-show or an issue with, uh, a customer, we'll research it. In fact, Craig, my paratransit manager is great at this. He'll-
He's on my speed dial, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. But the expectations, in fact, he has, he has taught me how to provide customer service. Craig is great. Uh, but what we'll do is we'll put notes in their files and it's, we deal with a lot of, uh, people, uh, in the blind community and they're like, you know, you, you can't just get out of the van and yell, uh, hey, what's your name? And so we, we try to customize that service, especially if there has been an issue with a perceived no-show in the past. So, um, we will research that and try to make that better on an individual, uh, level. Yes, ma'am.
One of the other things that I would encourage you to think about, I'm not asking that you implement it, but I just want you to think about it, is, um, because of COVID and because of, um, seniors, sometimes their mobility issues, the fact that Spectran could be used to, with the senior, of course, in the Spectran, picking up groceries at, at different places where you can drive up and pick up groceries. And then it's just taking, picking them up at their home, going to, we'll say, Myers, picking up their groceries and, and prescriptions and then taking them back home. Um, as, because that's one of the things that, that we get requests for on a regular basis is, is there anyone that can take me to go? I can order my groceries online or my, you know, daughter or my grandchildren will help me, but I've got no one to go and, and get the groceries. So if you would, you know, look at that and see if that's something, um, I realize when you're down drivers that it's, that's difficult, but, you know, even if you started a pilot, um, to see whether that would be something, uh, that would be accessible or not.
Especially if it continues to, um, help with their independence, I think that's a wonderful idea. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
That does it. Thank you, um, President.
We have Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Spitzley, and then seeing no other questions, I think we will wrap the conversation at that point. Councilman Jackson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for being here. CADA is the hometown transit, so I love CADA. But I do have a couple of just comments that, um, one is that I recognize you read a written statement pretty much about the progress of the labor negotiations and I understand, you know, that's might be what you have to do, but it was a long time ago. It seems like that this was going on, um, that we heard from employees and that they had concerns that, you know, it, it seems like if I could think how long it would take for it to be done, it seems like now it'd be long enough. So just a thought, because I feel like I missed out as much as we've heard from people that come down here and didn't have a chance to say it to you. And the other part is you mentioned, um, I guess other comment is your flexibility. Um, MSU students went down, you guys are flexing in and flexing out, which is great. And I just want to make sure, and I know Lansing's well-represented, but make sure that you can work on that same flexibility in the neighborhoods and in Lansing, because we are Lansing City Council, I might be biased, but, you know, it just seems like you should make sure it happens on both sides of the divide. And other than that, thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. We have to be flexible, yes.
Councilmember Spitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. So the first one I want to talk about is the contract issue as well. So, um, I think what, uh, Councilmember Jackson was referring to is not only just the contract of your bus drivers, but there was also an issue with your Spectran drivers. Are they, you contract out with a different company? And so there were some concerns that, um, some of your members and some of the union, the folks came and expressed about the, um, the, uh, how, how the contract negotiations were faring and some of the things that they felt that they were not being treated well. And so, um, you know, what is, what is it, the update on specifically that versus the large, the, the contract you were talking about?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Spitzley. So, um, we, we do have a contractor trans dev. Uh, that, uh, contract was in negotiations leading up to COVID and, uh, they settled their contract about the beginning of COVID in, in, uh, early 2020. Um, and so that's the, the, the contractor's contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, do you, I have a couple more questions, Mr. President. Um, do you open your, um, bus station up as a warming center, um, during like cold times like this?
Fantastic question, and, and I, I have to tell you-
And I'm sorry, before you finish that-
Yes.
And what, what is, what is the procedure? Does it have to be a certain level? Um, do you have a policy for that, opening up it as a warming center?
So I don't believe that, that, uh, there is, there are steps where, um, all of a sudden, you know, headline, uh, we're a warming center. What we've done is we've communicated not only through our partnerships with LPD, the shelters, and our social workers, that if someone is in need and needs to be sheltered, that they are allowed to be in that building. Um, and in fact, this week, we, we, we got a call from, um, the Human Relations Department about, uh, one of the shelters that is closing and, and how to, uh, take care of those folks. And we, we had an embarrassing arrest a couple of years ago where they were trying to, to help some homeless people. And we have transformed our thinking and expectation staff-wise and, and, um, and, and rider-wise to make sure that, uh, we are helping people get the, uh, services they need and not saying, you can't come in here. So, um, I, I'm not dodging the answer to your question. I know that the expectation on staff is if someone needs to come inside and warm up, in fact, if they need to get a meal, if they need to get a ride, we're, we're, we're pretty helpful. In fact, we, at that time, Councilmember, uh, had budgeted for a community police officer to come aboard to be a CADA police officer, and we shifted that and have now put that into, uh, social worker and have made, uh, hundreds of assists right out of the CTC.
So if someone comes in tomorrow, because it's going to be cold and they want to come in and get warm, they're not going to be, um, accused of loitering or trespassing and-
No, ma'am. No, there is, there is no loitering. In fact, if they are in need, we will, we will have the social worker find them assistance.
Okay, I have two more questions. So you, you talked about, um, you know, you have a regional discussion with Eaton and Clinton. So does that regional discussion include expanding your CADA services out into, you know, the Lansing Mall, the Horrocks, that area down there?
That's a great question, not that the others weren't, but I, this is the stuff that really gets me excited. And the answer is, I want it to, but I will not be using Lansing or the other four jurisdictions' millage money to do so. In fact, one of the neat, sorry, one of the neat, um, things we've done over the last year with help of our, our board is that for the first time ever, we are going to start advertising on buses. And that has really gotten our regional partners excited. I think there are other revenue sources that we can, um, generate. Uh, the state, uh, MDOT Transit Administrator has, uh, talked about finding some grants where we can extend services out there. So yes, I want to extend Route 3. And I also, this summer, when Amazon comes online, want to make sure that we've got robust service for Lansing residents-
Right.
-to come out to Amazon and beyond. It is a, I have to be careful because of the funding source, but the vision for regionalism, we have everything we need. We have the vehicles, we have the people. Um, I, and I was all excited about 2022 and all of a sudden, here we go with Omicron. So it's, it's coming.
And I, and I get, I, I understand. I, I think that with the pandemic, though, it provides us with a great opportunity because, because we, we have these, you know, we have Amazon coming out, we have the Myers Warehouse, we have a number of those places where our residents are working out there and if they can't get to work, um, notwithstanding COVID. Um, and so I, I would encourage you and, and work, you know, whatever you need to do to, to, to get, um, a service out there so that our residents can, if they, if they have to ride the bus, they can get to work safely and on a regular basis.
Not to belabor this, but I get excited about this as, as a planner. We, we met with the Amazon folks from Chicago and said, who really nails transit for you, you folks? And they said, uh, Little Rock, Arkansas. So we contacted that transit authority and the micro-transit model that, so I said, I want people to say, the Lansing area really welcomes in big business like this and, and produces that kind of transit service, even though it may not be, you know, mainline bus service. Plus they, they work overnight, so just sending a bus out there may not work. So I'm, I'm with you. This is a huge opportunity.
So then my last question or comment is this, um, when you were talking about, you know, you know, services and services through COVID and, you know, I did see the newspaper article about smaller buses and I, and I get why you have to do that if you don't have the ridership, you have to have smaller buses. But it, it did sound like, though, um, you know, you said there were no service cuts, but there are reduced hours of operation or that there are, um, that you're not, you know, that your service doesn't go as often. So are you still doing the consistent times of service as well?
So I think, thank you for clarifying. I think where the, the, the news crew kind of confused the issue is that we normally have reduction in service over holidays and during the summer. And so they were reporting on, uh, the reduction of service over the holidays and then said that equipment is going to change out moving forward in, in January. Uh, I've paired that with moving forward with the increase. So right now, there aren't service cuts or even frequency cuts. Uh, it's just a smaller bus on the express routes. I do anticipate in full disclosure that as we, um, struggle with the workforce, that we will probably start looking at frequency changes moving forward, um, in the next couple of months, but they'll be very temporary.
Okay. And are you still paying for, you said that, um, you, for a while you paid for folks to stay at home during COVID? Is that what you said? Or did I misunderstood that?
It was about eight to nine weeks from March to the, uh, to May of-
So you're not, you're not doing that anymore?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Um, Vice President Wood.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question, and actually it's to Councilmember Spatafor. Um, I know he was on Tri-County on planning and at one point when I was on there, there was the goal to have joint meetings with E-Trans and Clinton Transit and, and CADA to try, um, to work out some of those issues. Is that something that they're still working on or?
Not since I've been there, but I've only been there during the pandemic. So I do know that Commissioner Triplet is actually the outgoing chair of Tri-County, so I don't know if he can answer if that discussion happened behind the scenes or not.
So the short answer, Vice President Wood, is that there have been a number of those conversations that have happened between the leadership of the three transit agencies. I think one of the, uh, things that I've been most impressed about since Brad took over in his tenure is the three agency directors, uh, meet regularly now and have been working on collaborative efforts. But beyond that, there have been conversations between the appointed, uh, lay leadership of those authorities as well, some of which Tri-County has been facilitating, uh, and others that have happened in a more ad hoc way. But it's been a big focus of the Tri-County leadership and of CADA's leadership and of the current leadership of Clinton Transit, E-Trans, and CADA to, to illustrate the point and to go back to the question that Councilmember Spitzley asked, uh, about service that may have to cross, uh, a boundary line. I think that is probably the best example to date of the change in culture and attitude at CADA that I believe will ultimately benefit the region. Once upon a time, in that area in particular, the attitude was, right? We, you pay the CADA millage, you get the service we offer on the menu, and that was all there was to be done. But folks recognize that that doesn't work either for our region or its residents or for the jurisdictions. If, if we want to provide service regionally and the only model we offer is you join as a full member of the authority, you pay the full millage, you get the full service, even if you don't need it, even if it doesn't work for you, that's never going to work. And so we've been very intentional about, uh, conversations with Delta Township and conversations with Eaton County and conversations with Clinton Transit about how do we structure service so it actually meets the needs of the region, both your residents getting into, uh, Lansing and the core of the region and our folks getting out to employers and whatnot in there. And we've made a lot of progress there, and I think you would hear that not just from me as a member of the CADA board and Brad as the director, but if you asked our counterparts in Clinton Transit and E-Trans, you'd hear something similar, which is not to say there isn't a ton of work left to do there, but the ice, I think, has broken and there's progress being made there. We've got great partners in Tri-County who are helping facilitate that as well and will continue to move in the right direction there, in part because, you know, we talked about flexibility earlier, not just about routes, but also about how we interact with our other governmental partners to recognize that what we're about is providing transit service for individuals and serving neighborhoods and businesses, not about the kind of rigid strictures of boundaries that don't matter from a rider's perspective. Uh, so we've made a lot of good progress there and will continue to do so. And more of the meetings that you're talking about, both at the staff level and at the appointed leadership level, uh, will continue to happen to help make sure that that, we move in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank everyone, uh, for their consideration of this conversation. It certainly took, I'm going to be honest with you, that took longer than what I had played out in my mind, but I think Commissioner Triplet, uh, was correct when he said the true value would be in the Q and A. Um, I learned a lot and I really appreciate, um, the, the questions from the body. Um, I know the public learned quite a bit. I want to take just a moment and thank, um, you Brad, uh, thank you, Commissioner Triplet, of course, uh, Commissioner Geese who's on, on hand, and then I think, um, Derek as well as Dusty.
Dusty.
Um, the, the work you guys do is, is absolutely fantastic. Um, in terms of, um, you know, some of the responsiveness to Southwest Lansing, I so appreciate what you guys are doing with regards to bus stations, um, with regard to, um, shelters, with regards to placemaking. I really appreciate the responsiveness to some of the neighborhood concerns. I've seen you Brad in those neighborhood meetings. I really appreciate that, uh, the support for associations like the Southwest Action Group and the fundraisers and all of the above. Um, so I've been very, very impressed, um, these last few years. I really, really appreciate it and appreciate the good work you guys are doing. So thanks for being here tonight, too.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. We appreciate you guys.
Good night.
All right, that being said, that brings us to discussion action item, uh, 6C. This is an ordinance, uh, for re-adoption of the codified ordinances. For the Lansing City Charter, we've talked quite a bit about this dating back to last year. Uh, we do have to re-codify our ordinances every 10 years. Uh, dating back to 2018, we have actually made it an annual practice to do that, um, so that, basically to avoid any lapse of ordinances. Uh, we did have a hiccup, an oversight in 2017 where that occurred. So again, since 2018, and we have been taking a look at this, uh, on an annual basis. Uh, we did have a, uh, public hearing, December 13th, 2021. So what we're looking to do is to pass this out of committee of the whole, uh, into tonight, or I should say onto tonight, uh, council agenda for final consideration. So with that said, I would turn the floor over to Council, or Vice President Wood.
Uh, thank you, President Hussein. I would move the, um, re-adoption of the codified ordinances. Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the readoption of the codified ordinances.
Fantastic. There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to Action Item D. This is a resolution for an appointment of Holly Seaberry. Do we have Mrs. Seaberry with us tonight? Mrs. Seaberry, could you come on down to the well? You can come right through the double doors. Sit, you can take a seat at the table. Thank you so much. Thanks, Faith. We appreciate it. Welcome. We appreciate you being here. Yeah. So, this is a resolution of appointment for, again, Holly Seaberry as an at-large member of the Elected Officers' Compensation Commission. This would be for a term to expire October 1st, 2023. Typically, how we do this is we allow the candidate to introduce themselves, to talk a little bit about themselves professionally, maybe personally, a little bit, maybe about their time here in Lansing, and what uniquely qualifies them for the, the particular board appointment that we're looking at. And then we'll open it up for council questions and comments, okay? All right. Take it away.
No problem. I moved here to Lansing with my family about a year and a half ago, right at the start of the pandemic, which was really terrible timing. And I moved for my job, which is Executive Director of the Delta Dental Foundation. I've been there almost three years. I was commuting from Indiana. When I first started the job, my, the foundation is over Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana. But my family and I, as we spent more time in the Lansing area for my job, decided to make the move to Lansing. And I have two children, one at Lansing Catholic, one at St. Thomas. And professionally, I run a foundation that's focused on oral health equity and health equity in general, and have spent my entire career in the nonprofit field, running nonprofits. So, I have spent a lot of time setting compensation levels, and I've served on a lot of committees, usually hiring CEOs or executive directors, and leading the hiring committee and then setting the executive compensation.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council members? Councilwoman Spitzler.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, how did you hear about this board?
Lisa Speaker, who serves on the committee, asked me to apply for the open position.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Jackson.
So, this, this is just a comment, kind of, and welcome.
Thanks.
So, just the appearance of, I don't know, impropriety, because it's like the last three people that were appointed to the elected compensation are like from the same neighborhood.
Yeah.
Near the mayor as well. I mean, I think they might be friends, I don't know who's friends with who exactly, but you're probably super qualified, and I'll probably vote for you. But just for the future, you know, just find someone from a different neighborhood, you know? We did like three in a row. So, no offense.
That's okay.
And I know you'll do great. So, thank you.
But yes, I am from that same neighborhood. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, and I think we've had this, this conversation before. Certainly doesn't disqualify, you know, a person. But I think we also have to do a better job as council members, getting out into, you know, the different neighborhoods. It's a little bit different, you know, obviously with the pandemic and folks either choosing not to meet or having Zoom meetings. But really, making sure that folks know these opportunities exist, they know how to apply, that we're actually helping them apply, so that we really have kind of a, a rich crop of, of candidates from all across the city. But yeah, President, or, former President Spatafor, go ahead.
Nope. That's all you. I'll just point out, too, we did amend, this is, very happy to support your nomination. We did amend the, the code that deals with the EOCC to change the dates from odd years to even years. And the EOCC is completely governed by statute, which we have authority over. So, if there's a desire to see a mandate, it can be done through statute, just for the record.
We appreciate that. Councilwoman Spitzler.
And I, I'll just follow up. I mean, I, I, and I forgot to say thank you for agreeing to serve, because that's been, you know, I pound, whenever I get an opportunity to speak, I, I talk about the importance of Lansing residents to serve on boards. And I'm totally, I will absolutely support your appointment. But I, I will agree with Councilmember Jackson. We, we need to, we need to figure out what we're doing as a council, that we need to do more to let people know that we have these opportunities in these boards. And so, I think that you'll be great on the board. I totally support you. But we've got work to do, to do a better job of letting people know about these opportunities. Thank you.
I certainly agree. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this point, I would move the resolution to appoint Holly Seberg as an at-large representative. And that, the resolution does say, has been vetted by the mayor's office to meet all of the requirements according to the city charter. So, with that, I would make the motion.
There is a motion on the floor, President, or, I mean, it's going to take me at least a meeting or two.
That's all right.
Councilman Spatafor.
Just a question, question for you. Do you have any immediate relatives that work for any governmental agency, state level, state, federal, local?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. That brings us to Discussion Action Item E. Oh, I'm so sorry. You know, yep. So, this is actually, this will be on council agenda for tonight, 7:00 PM. You certainly are welcome to stay. If you do stay, we can get you sworn in tonight by the clerk.
Oh, okay.
If not, what you can do is contact the clerk's office as early as tomorrow morning to set up a time in person to, to be sworn in.
Okay.
And the first, my understanding is the next EOCC meeting is February 16th.
Oh, okay. Yeah. That's good to know.
Got a little bit of time. All right. Thanks so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Discussion Action Item E. Again, this is a resolution of appointment for Lori Fuller. Do we have Lori? Welcome, Ms. Fuller. It's good to see you. Come on down. This is a resolution of appointment for Board of Review. This would be a term to expire January 31st, 2023. For folks that are not familiar with this particular board, it does consist of three members, all serving in at-large capacities. The Board of Review does hear and make decisions related to property valuation or assessment appeals in accordance with state and city code. So, with that being said, you kind of see, you kind of saw how it plays out. We simply would like to hear a little bit about you, learn a little bit about you, and then we'll open it up for council questions and comments. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And thank you for letting me go second, so I could see how the first round went. My name's Lori Fuller. I'm born and raised in Lansing. I'm a third-generation Realtor. I've been actively selling real estate in the greater Lansing area for 35 years, full-time, and have, have quite a bit of experience in title insurance, contracts, negotiating. I'm very familiar with the SEVs, taxable values. I do, every day in my business, I do market analysis. So, I, I think that I've got the qualifications that could help on this committee. I did ask a lot of questions when being presented with this suggestion. And so, I understand there's not a lot of time to review every single request, but I think I can make a quick decision.
Okay. Fantastic. Anything else? All right. Do we have any council member questions or comments? Seeing none. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the resolution appointing Lori Fuller to the Board of Review. And again, according to the resolution, this says that the mayor's office has vetted this candidate, and that they meet all the qualifications as per the charter. So, with that, I move, make that motion.
All right. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And same thing, if you can stay, you can certainly be sworn in tonight as part of 7:00 PM, or 7:00 PM city council meeting. If not, you can certainly get to the clerk's office tomorrow morning, schedule the time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right. That brings us to the exciting part of the agenda. This is a resolution. It, let me, let me back up just a little bit. We had a resignation from Mr. Brandon Betts this past Friday. It actually came in at about 3:33. In the letter, he cited very generally professional growth, personal growth, maybe some change on the horizon as, as reasons to, you know, being in a position to transition out of this and transition into the next aspect of his life. We certainly appreciate Mr. Betts' service to the city of Lansing the past two years. Certainly wish him well on his, on his next chapter, as, as well as his family. That being said, the question then became, okay, what do we do? And it's not that this body is without precedent. Or I should say, it's not that this is without precedent. This has happened before. As a matter of fact, not this iteration, but another iteration, I had to take a look back in 2015, when then-President Quinney was successful in an election to become Ingham County Register of Deeds. He transitioned out of the position. Specifically, and I'm going to read just a couple of things from the charter to set the stage for tonight. Article 2, Chapter 3, Section 303.2 reads that whenever a vacancy exists in the office of the city clerk or member of the city council, the council by majority vote of members serving shall appoint a qualified person to fill the office until January 1st, following the earliest November general election, at which a successor can be elected to fill the office for the rest of the term. Further, in Article 2, Chapter 4, Section 406.4, the charter clearly provides 30 days for this process to be completed. We spent quite a bit of time this past weekend. Council leadership, our office manager, Sherry Bulke, as well as the city attorney's office, reviewing the charter, reviewing past precedent. We really have determined the appropriate course of action, considering the charge laid out in the charter and past precedent. So, we have to do a couple of things tonight. Number one, we have to take a look at a resolution that will actually accept the resignation from Councilman, former Councilman Brandon Betts. The second thing we have to do is pass a resolution where we actually lay out the process of appointment. And that's going to obviously include an application period, interview period, as well as a final appointment. Before acting on the acceptance, acceptance of resignation, however, I would like the city attorney to weigh in on an issue before us. There's been quite a, a bit of discussion with regards to the charter, the language in the charter as it pertains to general election, and whether or not this would be a one-year or a two-year appointment. And so, I'm going to go and turn the floor over to our city attorney to, to address that issue.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, as you indicated, the city attorney's office spent considerable amount of time, a considerable amount of time this weekend looking into the charter, state election law, city ordinance. And we came to the conclusion that this is a one-year appointment, that council will choose a replacement now, within the next 30 days, and then the general election in November of 2022 will elect an individual to, to serve the remainder of that term. So, that's the answer we came to.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to that? All right. Seeing none. What we are going to first take a look at is the, again, this is Action Item F. It's a resolution of acceptance of council resignation. I'm going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
At this time, I would move the resolution to accept the resignation of Councilmember Brandon Betts from the First Ward. Just along with that, a note that we do have a signed copy of his email, so that, that if any council member would like to see that, it's not in the packet, but we do have a signed copy to make this official. So, with that, I would move that resolution.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to the next resolution.
President Hussein, I, I did forget to add that this will be a late item, that we will be suspending the rules this evening and putting this on the agenda as a late item.
We appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
That brings us to the resolution pertaining to the process to fill the vacant First Ward position of the Lansing City Council. Again, per the charter, we do have, yep, thank you so much. You guys actually have a draft in front of you. And actually, the packet contains a few different pieces. On the first page, we have a couple of options when we take a look at the dates. And I'll talk about this in just a minute. And then if you flip it, you actually have a draft resolution where we plugged in some potential dates. So, as I kind of read through this, I'd like you guys to take a look at that if possible. But again, per the charter, we have 30 days from that, that January 7th resignation date to complete this process. That means we have to accept applications, we have to hold interviews, we have to make an appointment, and we have to swear in by February 6th. So, this process is going to move rather quickly. What you have in front of you, again, is a draft resolution taken from 2015, with dates amended based on what we believe might be a potential kind of series of for this year. The city clerk, well, actually, if, if you took a look, if you took, and, and I was hoping that, and it's, it's my fault, I should have suggested that we actually had the resolution from, back in 2015, the, the application window was only open for four days. And you'll notice that we are kind of suggesting that maybe we keep that open for two weeks. This is unique in the fact that the individual that is going to put their name in the hat, or any individual that's going to put their name in the hat for this potential position, really has to consider the charge year. They are going to have to serve this year. They're going to have to consider whether or not they want to run this year to serve the, the last year of the term for next year, and then turn around again that following year if they're looking to fulfill another four years. And so, we wanted to open that window up a little bit longer to provide for an opportunity for folks to, to take that into consideration. There's also a holiday mixed in there to make things a little bit more difficult. But again, back in 2015, what they did was they opened it up for four days. I think they had that closed by Feb, February 13th. The city clerk vetted applications, afforded those applications to, to council. There were interviews then established for that Tuesday, the 17th, as part of a Committee of the Whole meeting. They did hold a possible date open for a second set of first interviews, which never happened. They then called for selecting from the first round, three finalists, using paper ballots. And then they established a final interview, February 19th, as part of a Committee, Committee of the Whole. Then they, they approved an appointment, and then actually had that person approved and sworn in by February 23rd. So, from beginning to end, it took them about 14 days. So, again, it is a quick process, and part of that is because it's laid out that way in the charter. Okay? So, with that said, if you're looking at your options, okay, we have option number one, which would call for, if you look down at, and actually, let's just go through this very quickly. If you look at the draft resolution, number one, it says that applications for the vacancy will be accepted in the city clerk's office starting Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, until Friday, January 21st, 2022. We have talked with the clerk. The clerk has informed us that they would be able to go live tomorrow. So, that is absolutely a possibility. Okay? If we go to item number two, it says that the city clerk will review the applications and supporting documentation, and determine the applications that qualify to be considered for a First Ward vacancy. Obviously, they're looking at things such as indebtedness to the city and other requirements per the charter. Do we have any questions or comments on one or two? Councilwoman Spitzler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for full disclosure, I will not be here the week of the 2024th. So...
Yeah. So, when we get, when we get to that part, can we have that conversation?
Well, I thought that's where we were. So, I apologize. What are we talking about?
So, right now, all we're, we're looking at is that window to accept applications.
Oh, okay. Apologies.
So, yes, our attendance, or, or us being in the city of Lansing will not affect that process. Okay? Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. And just for clarification's sake, when we're talking about the clerk looking at the applications, this is vetting according to the charter, not making a determination whether that person resume makes them qualify to be part of the appointment. It's just the charter requirements.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. And, and if, if we were to follow the process with some measure of fidelity in terms of how it was followed in 2015, and it certainly would be my suggestion to the body, everyone that qualified was given an interview. Okay? All right. If we could take a look at number three, it then says on Wednesday, January 26th, 2022, or Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, the Committee of the Whole will be held at 6:00 PM to interview the qualified applicants. Each interview shall last no longer than 10 minutes. If necessary, Committee of the Whole shall be held at 6:00 PM, with, and obviously, we didn't, we don't have a date in there, during which interviews of qualified applicants will continue. Seeing as, again, we pulled this from 2015, we were pulling from, obviously, citywide electorate, and electorate, and they had to contemplate a number of applications. It is my suggestion that we strike that piece. I don't think that we will have that number of applications to have to have that contingency date in there. So I think, and again, unless I hear otherwise from this body, I think what we're looking at is based on schedules and ability, that first interview date, I want to make sure that we have that etched in this, in this resolution. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Spitzler to talk to us a little bit about her schedule, because I think that might affect that first date.
Well, I think, thank you, Mr. President, and I think everybody, you know, probably has some, some challenges.
Sure.
You know, my concern is, you know, I won't be there that week. So in the event that we've decided to have the interviews, you know, I won't be able to participate, I'm asking, I will not be able to participate virtually.
And that's, that's the week of the 24th.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, my question is, would I be able to participate virtually? Is my question.
No.
Okay.
You can watch.
I can watch. Oh. Okay.
Vice President Wood.
My only concern in the possibility of striking that would be, the president can set a committee of a whole at any time. So if we went ahead and struck that and then felt that we needed to have, the only thing is the 48-hour notice, or 24-hour notice for Open Meetings Act. Pardon? 18 hours? Okay, 18 hours for Open Meetings Act. So we could still make, let's just say, we ended at 10 o'clock on the 2nd of February and decided we were going to have one at 6 o'clock the next day, would we be able to make that turnaround? If we have it in there and don't need it, we don't have to have a, a meeting. You can always cancel the meeting.
Sure, if we contemplate a second date, that does change things as laid out in number 10. And so we can, I mean, we can have that conversation when we get there, but...
Okay.
Which would mean we could potentially be meeting on that Friday. Councilman Spatafor.
You have a question. Is there, I'm seeing, look at the options that you've spelled out in this document in front of us. Councilmember Spitzler and I are kind of talking back and forth about our unavailability. I can't be here on the 3rd. I'm out of town completely for the second interviews and the vote. Is there a reason the Monday, 31st, was not available as an option?
No, these were just options.
Okay.
We took a look at, we wanted to make sure that we had something to work from. We are, we are certainly fluid here.
Okay, I'm fine with preposting the COW meetings and then canceling the meetings, just so we can hold it on our schedules, but for me, it would work better if we were on that Monday and Tuesday. And still gets us in by the deadline.
So the 31st and the 1st.
Councilmember Spitzler's schedule, yes?
Yep.
Thank you, President Hussein. Yeah, the 31st would work perfect for me. I mean, I would watch the interviews virtually on, and then if I was there to be able to, you know, be there for action at a special meeting on the 31st, that would be perfect for me, because I would watch the interviews online. But I think I agree with President Spatafor. If we can do them on Mondays or Tuesdays or something like that, that would be, that would be good, too. But the 31st would be perfect.
Okay, perfect. So it would be totally possible to have the first, the first set of interviews on the 31st. We could then prepare for the 2nd on the 1st of February. We could call a special meeting for the 1st of February, and then actually, I'd be able to appoint and swear in. Does that make sense? Okay. Because we have to have it done by February 6th, so February 7th isn't a possibility. Vice President Wood.
I forgot this and needed to jump back one, so when you indicated paper ballots, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that according to a lawsuit that we were involved in, in another appointment process, that yes, you'll do paper ballots, but they will be read into the record with your votes. It's so that everyone is aware that that's, that's how that process works, so that when you're making decisions on this.
Are there other comments, questions with regard to that? No? So the 31st and the 1st works for everybody, correct? Okay.
Number three.
Yep.
I'll say 31st.
Yep, so number three will now say the 31st. Perfect. If we move on to number four, it says, following all interviews, the council will select three candidates for the next round of interviews. The council will select from these interviews three candidates as finalists, from which they will select the appointee for the vacancy. Number five, to narrow the field to three finalists, and that will be at the January 31st, sorry, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Council members will select up to three candidates on paper ballots, which was just discussed, which will include each member's name and signature. Number six, each council member may select up to three candidates, but it is not required to do so. Council members may not vote for the same candidate more than once. Councilman Jackson.
All right, I'm going to say a few phrases.
Sure.
The final four, the frozen four, the college football playoff four. I don't know, I just think we should have four instead of three, so I'd, to more include people, but also even number and some other reasons. So four would be my suggestion, more people the merrier. And wouldn't it be cool if we did ranked choice voting? But that might be, that might be a step above, but if we could do it, it would be sweet. But yeah, I would amend, move to amend four after the conversation discussion.
Are there other thoughts on that? I will tell you that although this was the resolution that came out of 2015, they actually did settle on five finalists because of the way the votes came down. So although this is spelled out in this way, it very well may be the way that the votes, you know, tally, that we end up with four or five finalists anyway. I don't know if that changes anything for you.
I won't cry if it doesn't change, but nobody does.
Okay.
Yeah, I said I wouldn't. I mean, you know, if no one else thinks it's a good idea, then obviously it wouldn't pass, but four seems better than three, so we can be more inclusive, because we don't know how many people.
But just in, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to make this into a mess, but just to remind you, every single person that applies, that meets the requirements per the charter is going to have an opportunity for the first piece, to actually come through, interview. We want to make sure, however, in that second round, that we're able to delve in a little bit deeper, to give a little bit more time. But again, because this is, you know, we're looking for folks just from the First Ward, I'm not even certain we're going to have the same type of turnout that we did. We had some 25 applicants back in 2015, but again, that was in that large position. So, but ultimately, ultimately, it's going to come down to those votes, and whether or not that we can actually stick to that three. Does that help?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Other questions?
So we're going to keep it at three?
Yeah. Are there other questions or comments? All right. So if we move on to number seven, correct? The ballots will be collected, and the votes of each council member will be read into the record, as referenced by Vice President Wood earlier. The top three vote-getters from the compiled ballots will be the three finalists. Following selection of the finalists, all votes will be reset, and a final round of interviews will be conducted. Are there any questions or comments up to this point? Seeing none. Number 10, the interviews of the three finalists will occur during a Committee of the Whole meeting at 6:00 PM, and so we're going to change this to Tuesday, and that will be February 1st. Okay. Number 11, prior to the finalist's interviews occurring, public comment will be taken, which shall be limited to 30 minutes total, and shall require advance sign-in pursuant to Council Rule 19. Each finalist's interview shall last no longer than 30 minutes. Do we have questions or comments pertaining to that piece? Seeing and hearing none, let's move on down to number 12. Following discussion at the, again, that's going to be Tuesday, February 1st, meeting, council members will vote on which candidate shall receive the appointment. Number 13, the finalist candidate receiving the most votes will be selected as the appointee for the vacancy. The appointment will be by resolution, which shall be passed out of Committee of the Whole for consideration during the special council meeting on, and that will be changed now to February, Tuesday, sorry, February 1st. With seven council members serving, four votes will constitute a majority and will be sufficient for passage of a motion and adoption of a resolution. Do we have questions or comments? Vice President Wood.
In setting a special meeting, do we have to post the time, or can we say immediately following the Committee of a Whole?
That is probably a question better served for the city attorney's office.
That's...
It's my understanding that per the Open Meetings Act, you need to post the time of the meeting.
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
I'm sorry, you need to post the time of the meeting.
So if you have three candidates, and 30 minutes each, and we start at 6 o'clock, and we have public comment on top of that, hour and a half...
You can always start late.
Yep, you can.
You just can't start sooner than a posting.
I would suggest we, we would probably call for 8 o'clock, and then if we start late, we start late.
Do we need to put that in this resolution as well?
No, I think the special meeting needs to be called by the president.
Yeah.
Or two members of council. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that takes us to number 14, the only item on the agenda for, and again, that will be the Tuesday, February 1st, special council meeting will be the resolution for appointing a new council member to fill the vacancy and the swearing in of that new council member. All right, and then 15, the city council sets an additional meeting date of blank at 6:00 PM to be used as an option if there's no decision by the date of the regularly scheduled meeting of. And so we need to consider whether or not we need such a date put into this resolution. It was included in 2015. We weren't certain if we would need that. Are there thoughts, considerations? I don't think we do. Seeing some head shakes, no?
No.
All right, so we'll strike that language. We will get this done, folks. Okay? All right. Are there other questions or comments before I turn the floor over to Vice President Wood? Seeing and hearing none. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. With the corrections and the changes that have been made to the draft resolution for the appointment process for the First Ward position, I would move the resolution, and again, this is the, will be, if voted out of committee, will be acted on as a late item this evening.
I appreciate it. There is a motion on the floor, further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to action item number seven. This deals with referrals. We had a number of issues before the Committee of the Whole that we've determined to be more appropriate to be sent back to committee. We will be reading committees into the record, including committee leadership, as well as membership at large tonight. Of course, we're hoping that those committees begin meeting as soon as possible, so there are a few items that we're going to actually discharge from the Committee of the Whole and back to our standing committees. So first, and I want to read this into the record, we have a resolution. This is a claim appeal, number 1870, Todd Dowric, at 1032 Clear Street, and this is in the amount of $490. We are going to discharge that. I'm going to discharge that to city operations. We have a resolution. This deals with a development district liquor license for RBM Properties, 224 South Washington Square. I am going to discharge that to city operations as well. And then we also have a resolution dealing with a liquor license for Q5 Distillery Inc. for a small distiller, brandy and mixed spirits manufacturer, consumer sampling event on premise, tasting room, outdoor service, and Sunday sales, PM license for 112 North Large Street, and I'm going to discharge that to city operations as well. Is there any other business before the body? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned at 6:55, and our city council meeting will begin at 7:00 PM.